Nancy, want to take a moment?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Martucci. I'm the town clerk. For those that you may not be aware, tonight, the first piece of agenda is that we have a special town meeting. And just to give you a little background first, the way that our charter reads, if we had a quorum of 75 people, we would go ahead, we would open the meeting, we would call for moderator, and then take any votes that might be necessary. Since we do not have a quorum this evening, based on our charter of not having a quorum of 75, all of our amendments this evening are passed according to 2.1, 0.1 of the charter. I will read the question. It is approve the amendment or approve the amendment and restatement of the retirement plan for the employees of the Town in Madison, Connecticut. So again, since it is now 7 o'clock, all that is passed. I don't know if anybody has a question about it, or we need any explanation on it.
Is this the provision that we started over years ago, three years ago?
It actually started, I believe, in 2001, and this comes your permission too.
Okay. And March, so yeah, it's getting a little fuzzy here. This is the defined contribution?
No, it's really, it's really just-
No, just on my end.
Alright, defined minimum.
Yeah, my end, but it's really just cleaning up on a legal basis. There were some things that didn't conform with ongoing changes in law, so that's what we did.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay. So that concludes the special town meeting portion tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Gus.
It actually feels like we have a crowd tonight.
It is. It's nice.
So I'd like to call a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, October 23rd, 17th order. Please rise for the Pledge of Belief. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please remain standing for a minute. I'd like to endure a moment of silence for Eleanor McCarthy, who is a former employee of Town in Madison, who was killed in a car accident last week. Thank you. Number two on our agenda tonight is the approval of amendments from October 10th.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, first selectman's comments. I'm going to cut my comments short, because I know there are a bunch of other people here who'd like to say some things, but I would like to just thank Bob Hale for his service on the Board of Selectmen for the past four years. Bob and I have more than just a government relationship. We've been very good friends for years. He's been a mentor of mine, and I appreciate all he's done for this town.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
And you were a wonderful mentee.
With that, I'd like to open it up to citizen comments. Jim? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a second.
We need to do the money thing.
Oh, yeah.
Gus Harvath, 34 realtor, is it on?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was very circled. I just wanted to congratulate Bob for his service at the Town of Madison, and thank him for his service, certainly the four years he put on the Board of Selectmen were exemplary, but he put on many, many years of others, especially-
How long were you on the War of Education?
About 20 years. 20 years, okay.
I finally got it right.
This isn't just a one-shot deal, and I've been dealing on and off with Bob for that period of time, even before that, back in the 1970s, so I recognize the on and off in time, and everything he put in to support the Town of Madison, I would like to personally thank him.
Thank you.
Jim?
Jim Madison, Green Hill Road. I just want to echo, I think, both Gus's and your comments about Bob. Thank you, Bob, for all of your work. Pauline, thank you for all of the countless, you know, weeks and months that Bob is away meetings and so forth, so you both should be congratulated. You have been a mentor to me as well in a lot of different things, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Phil. Yes, thank you. Phil Morrie, person from Everett's Lane. I would like to amend what you just said a minute ago, I think, to condolences to Bob's board of workers, because now Bob will be home more. But Bob, I would like to also thank you for all of your service. I know you're a great help to me, both when you were chairman of the Board Ed, of the Board of Ed, we were able to work well together, and when you moved over here to Board of Selectmen, we worked well together. I valued your counsel and your advice, and I hope you will still be giving that as you go into your retirement years, and every day will be sad.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just would like to also add my thanks, Bob, for all your years. You know, Madison is a very fortunate town. We have a rich, rich history of wonderful leaders devoting so much time, and really our town, when we talk about town leaders, we talk about people like you, and we obviously talk about people like Gus, and we're just, the rest of us are not old enough to be there yet, thank goodness. But Bob, you have, how much you educated our town on educational funding. You were the first person that actually in this town understood the special education formulas, the ECS formulas, these are things that we, I get to Hartford, and there are people that still don't understand it. You were way ahead of your time identifying that, identifying the problems going forward that we were going to see, so I thank you for that. But Bob and Pauline, you have been such examples for so many of us that love this town like you do, and I know you've been connected to the town because of Pauline longer than anybody I know, but I do, I do want to thank you and your wife, and your family, really, how generous you've been to all of us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Art. Art Simon, 65 Bartlett Drive. Everybody knows about Bob's government service and so forth, it's been marvelous career, it's been very encouraging to me to get involved when I came back to town, but I'd also like to point out, this service goes back way beyond government, I believe to the Lions Club. I think Bob was the Young Man of the Year in the Lions Club, back when I, when I was a boy, and I went to, went to grade school with his son, and so I've known him forever, and just a wonderful man, in addition to being a terrific involvement in government and in other areas of Madison community life, even before he was involved in the government, so fabulous job, Bob.
Thank you, Art.
Actually, it was Mr. Hale.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. It's kind of good to be able to talk to you there.
Anything else?
I'd like to add my two cents in. Bob, thank you. As a relative newcomer to town volunteerism, you were there, you were actually one of the very first people that reached out and offered to sit down with me and explain how things worked, how they were supposed to work, how they might go wrong, and since, well, for the last six or so years, you have answered the phone every time I called and asked for advice. You've given me perspective and counsel, and for that, I'll always be grateful. In your honor, we tried to make an agenda with one item for every year of service. Unfortunately, we just ran out of things to talk about, so we had to stop at 28.
Thank you.
Pauline, thank you, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of myself, on behalf of the taxpayers of the town, for graciously sharing, Bob, with us for all these years. I know that you guys have some travel plans coming up, and I hope that you enjoy them, and I hope you don't think about us while you're traveling.
Thank you.
Let me see this, one second, because Eileen has to go to another meeting, but I wanted to hear you.
Actually, I was just going to say, thank you, Bob, for your years of friendship. I mean, Banish, 554 Boston Post Road, years of friendship, and you are also, as you know, and I think most people in the chamber know, a mentor to me. I'm just a little upset that since we have less time to spend with the Town of Madison now, we've all called him our pest president, rather than our past president, I think you're maybe going to be spending more time with the chamber? Is that possible?
Sign here.
But Bob and I go way back. We have had quite a history, and twice a year, we would be out on the town green at 6:00 a.m., or he'd be out at the town green at 6:00 a.m., calling me on the phone, saying, are you awake yet, to set people up for the antique show, but thank you from the business community, especially for your, all of your wonderful words of wisdom and your guidance for all these years, not just for the business community, but for the residents of the town as well. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I apologize.
Now, Bob Hale may not have been my teacher, but he has tutored me over the years. I first met Bob about 10 years ago. I had just taken office down in the corner, and he and Superintendent Griffith came in to educate me about the capital budget for the schools. I remember it was a very lively discussion, Bob, and you and I have had many lively discussions since. They've always been civil and polite, and I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate that. Your knowledge of this town and its government has been an extraordinary useful resource to all of us. You've provided a sense of continuity. This government, with all of its 200-plus volunteers, is characterized by people coming and going, but your sense of history and continuity has been very valuable to all of us. I'm especially going to miss you, because now that you're leaving this board, I'm going to be left to deal with all of the younger whippersnappers by myself.
Okay. Thank you.
So as the, as the newbie on the group, I've known Bob, I guess, for better of a year now, in our working relationship, and I have to say, I agree with everything that everybody said. Bob has absolutely been a mentor to me as well, never, never short of an opinion, never short of an idea, but Bob welcomed me with open arms onto the Board of Selectmen, and I still recall the first meeting I had with Bob in the back room, and giving me sort of the pearls of wisdom on how, what it means to be a new selectman, and sort of the protocol and the ideas that you need to impart to really drive some, some decisions in this town. And I can't thank you enough, Bob. You've been a fun, fun person to sit next to as well, I have to admit. There's always a few jokes over here as well, in full disclosure, so.
And there is hope for you.
Thank you. So I appreciate it, and Bob.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kevin?
Kevin Schroeder, Johnson Lane. While I'd like to commend Mr. Hale for his contributions to the town, I've actually come to the meeting with a slightly different intention. I don't know if maybe I should hold my question until other people have had a chance to commend Mr. Hale.
Go for it.
Well, I'm here as a member of the Board of Madison Little League, and as a citizen and taxpayer in Madison, seeking some sort of clarity on the comments that were made to start the last Board of Selectmen meeting on the 10th. Mr. Banish, I believe at that meeting, you started by saying, given the state's fiscal uncertainties, we might need to look at the CIP project for the J.C. Fields, which was approved by the voters, and was set to begin while you were making those comments, and now, as a baseball community, we're a little bit in a situation of unease about the status of this project. And just as, very quickly as background, this is a project that began eight years ago as a two-stage process, two-phase project. We are trying to implement Phase Two of this project that was begun eight years ago. We've been involved with the Beach and Rec Department in developing the proposal for the CIP budget. It was approved by the voters. It was supposed to begin in August. Is there something afoot in changing this plan? And the reason I ask is, not only as a volunteer member of the Board of Madison Little League, but as a citizen voter, what I've witnessed, and I apologize in advance if I'm inaccurate here, what I've witnessed on a few projects in the CIP process, which I think is a very important example of participatory budgeting in local government, is that the voters-approved projects that have been presented to them, and then elected politicians at the 11th hour have intervened in those projects. And I'm not exactly sure if that's in the spirit of the CIP process, or even within the charter, if any one selectman has that authority to intervene in a project that is slated for execution. If not, then I think it's incumbent upon the entire Board of Selectmen to stop that sort of interference. And again, if there has been no interference on the J.C. project that was scheduled to start late August, I apologize in advance, but we're seeking some clarity about the status of this project. I do have a meeting tomorrow morning with the Beach and Rec Director to get his version of the story. Thank you.
Any more comments?
Yes, thank you. This is a non-Bob Hale comment. I would like to, on record, lamenting the passing of Ted Olive here a couple of weeks ago. We appointed him to the, to the joint Madison Gilbert Veterans Affairs Committee, and I believe he was the chairman of that, of that committee. He was very hardworking, very knowledgeable, and did a lot for the veterans of this community. And so it's, in addition to his family's loss and so forth, it's the town's loss. And as a corollary to that, I would like to, since, full-heartedly approve Joel Miller as the, as his replacement. Joel has been a serving member, maybe when he was on my watch, he'd been called up for a year's active duty and so forth, so I think he'll be an excellent addition to the Attorney Committee.
Any other comments? Here we go, I'll move on. Number five, discuss and take action to approve the appointment of Elizabeth Amundola to the full-time position of Animal Control Officer, Mayor's Police Department, AFCME, Council Number Four, Union, to replace Fran Fellows, who is retiring on November 1st, 2017. So?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discuss and take action to approve the creation of the position of Taxpayer Salary Grade 13 exempted to the classified plan as reviewed by the Job Evaluation Committee. Funding to fill the position exists within the line item for the Director of Town Services.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say, I meant to say before we started this, the, all the positions we're discussing are funded positions, they're not, we're not adding anybody that they've been funded and either empty or awaiting, seeing.
You're anticipating my question by looking at me.
No, I just, so we have a motion, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discuss and take action to approve the modifications, the position of landfill gain attendant, Public Works Teamsters, as reviewed by the Job Evaluation Committee.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody, discuss and take action to approve the job descriptions for the position of Fire Inspector One and Fire Investigator, for inclusion into the classified plan as reviewed by the Job Evaluation Committee.
So moved. Second.
I just want to ask a clarifying question. All of these have been by our Job Evaluation Committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, a motion, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, discuss and take action to approve the job description and salary for position of Environmental Health Inspector, Health Department, as reviewed by the Job Evaluation Committee. Funding exists within the line items to the Health Department's budget to recruit and hire for this position.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve the hiring of Mr. John Malabasi to the position of Truck Driver located within the Public Works Department. Position is Union. Rate of pay is $21.79 per hour. Position is budgeted, not requiring appropriation of funds. Position vacancy was created by a promotion.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, discuss and take action to approve the job description changes and salary reclassification for the position of Director of Senior Services. Salary grade 15, as reviewed by the Job Evaluation Committee. Funding exists and was budgeted for the reclassification in the Salary Reserve line item effective January 1st, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, the verbiage that's in red is what's additional?
Yes.
And that justifies the-
The increase in salary.
Thank you.
And the change in the description.
Excellent.
Okay. Number 12, discuss and take action to approve the job description change-
Did we vote? Did we vote?
No, no, you know what? Yeah, we did, and then I'll ask the question. I'll ask the question after we vote it out. Yeah. No, it's that.
Okay. Very good.
Number 12, discuss and take action to approve the job description changes and salary reclassification for the position of Assistant Director of Senior Services, salary grade 10, as reviewed by the Job Evaluation Committee. Funding exists and was budgeted for the reclassification in the Salary Reserve line item effective January 1st, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
If the Human Resource Department wasn't around, we would have a much shorter meeting.
Oh, thank you for not including everything.
Now, there's support for them.
Number 13. Discuss and take action to approve a request from Madison Hose Company Number One to the Zodiac Boat and Trailer Request. So moved.
Second.
Can we, can we just have a-
Bob, are you going to talk, or are you with Greg, or?
I will, you don't mind, go first.
No, that'd be great.
Before I begin, Mr. Hale, thank you for all your years of service. On behalf of the Fire Department, we know what it's like to volunteer, so again, thank you for all you've done for the town.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Gentlemen, the boat we're replacing or asking to replace is our rubber inflatable that we keep at the firehouse, 24/7. Purchased in 1997 by the Hose Company itself. It's a rubber, again, inflatable Zodiac, does most of our shoreline operable calls, and a lot of work on the 4th of July fireworks festivities as well. Real quick, it's just getting old. That's all there is to it. It was repowered in 2012 due to some failures. The new tubes that keep the air in there, they're approximately $10,000 to fix. My boat captain here, Lieutenant, he's down there pretty much every other day, putting air into that boat, making sure, but it's just run its course. It's about 20 years old. The committee that got together, we decided to go with a smaller boat. Bigger boats are not always better, apparently. It's good for us. It's going to be more of a shoreline inland boat, again, doing the beaches. It's easier to launch, not going to lie, West Wharf has become a little bit harder for us in the last few years to launch the Zodiac, which is where we normally launch that boat from. The new boat is going to be just under half the size, just a little bit-
Shorter.
Yeah, five feet, six feet shorter, but it's capable now of being lifted by us off the trailer and put into the water. That's huge, so now if we can't get into tight spots, get a few strong guys or girls, then boat launches. The pricing of them, again, we asked, I believe, for $65,000. We came in at $18,574 for the boat itself. There's a couple of different quotes. What's that?
We have to talk about this.
Can I say, can I, can I stop right there? The Defender Industry one, that's the boat we'd like to go with, it should be the top one on your guys' sheet there. And again, there's some other quotes in there for you to look at, but they really did not match our needs for what we wanted to do. Of course, with a boat comes a trailer. Did our homework on the trailer. The one we'd like to go with is the Osprey LCC, and that price is for $3,245. The other ones in there were just not really rated, they're underrated for what we needed, and believe it or not, they cost more, so. Hope that helps you guys, but came in way under budget on our end for what we're going to use it for, hopefully for the next 15, 20 years.
Art, are there any other costs involved with this?
That's all you see there. The light jackets, everything's included. And we have equipment already on the old piece that we'll probably use and go through. I mean, our bags are, our wet suits are all on the rescues and all that kind of stuff, so.
What happens to the old boat and the old trailer?
Well, that's owned by the Fire Department. That was purchased back in 1997 with funds from the Fireman's Dance we used to have back then, and there were some donations at that time in memory of people in town, including my grandmother, that was purchased for that, so. It's owned by the Fire Department. We'll figure out how, we'll get rid of it, do something with it, and obviously, that money will be used to put back into the new boat we have and add more equipment.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Tom, would you like us to approve a dollar or male?
No, the $55,000 was approved, and they're only spending $21?
$18,574. And then there's something for the trailer.
I have a question about the fee for documents. Are municipalities required to pay that for registration and all that stuff?
$2,000, I don't know.
It's $150 to register the trailer, and I would think that municipalities might be exempted.
I don't know. That's a good question.
We'll get, we'll figure that out for you.
We don't need to send the state any more money than we have to.
Yeah, that's a good question. We'll find out about that. I know that we just had, went through a bunch of stuff with town vehicles where we needed to title them, because they don't, municipalities don't use them, so.
Those were leased.
We'll find out about that. Question, thank you.
Those were leased. You don't have to title town vehicles.
Right.
Those were leased, that's why we had to title them. So Shellfish Commission previously has purchased boats, and they do not have to be titled by the state of Connecticut, but we have a contact book, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
It's only $150, but everybody's good.
So the, what is the total request at this point? So there's three, three items here?
Boat and a trailer, too.
No, I think you're looking at the, the three items, it's two, boat and a trailer.
What's the, what's the $3,245 and then the $2742? Someone behind it.
Those, those were the other comparisons, too? I threw in there, so you can see we had other quotes. The two I read off are the ones we'd like to go with.
First boat and that trailer. First trailer. Three cars and a machine for the trailer. So in each case, the first one, Bob?
Yes, sir, the first one that I read there. $18,574.73.
Plus the $3245.
$3245, correct.
So we already motioned, are we in discussion, right?
We're in discussion, yeah, we're in discussion. Any other questions?
No. That's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Number 14, that was number 14. Number 15, discuss and take action-
14.
14, is that what? Discuss and, discuss the Heatherwood Bridge project stats. Rob?
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to open up the discussion. We received a biennial, the biennial bridge inspection from DOT this past May, and most of the bridges in town have been rated fair to good, and one was rated poor, which was the Heatherwood, so we decided to sort of take a proactive approach before any additional degradation could, could happen to the bridge. So I contacted the DOT, and it turns out this bridge is eligible for the federal local bridge program, which is, the county road bridge is falling under that right now, which is the 80 percent reimbursement. So just to, I just wanted to open it up to public forum. I've consulted a structural engineer to get some preliminary engineering costs, the construction costs, and construction administrative costs, and when we get these numbers back, I'm hoping to have an additional follow-up meeting, and I'll be able to figure out the 20 percent that the town would be responsible for. But this is just sort of a preemptive conversation about, we do have a rated poor bridge in town based on the national bridge inventory, based on the bridge DOT inspection, and I think, based on this and the DOT's recommendation, we should begin the process and start moving forward. So based on the proposal I get and the, the numbers that come back, I'll be able to follow up with what the town would have to pay. Right now, it's on the presumption that it would be less than the county road bridge, but we'll see when, when the numbers come in, but I just wanted to bring it to the intention that we do have a bridge that needs to be looked at closely in the company ones.
Thank you, Rob.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Will there be a public hearing involved with public information session?
Yes, a lot of the federal local bridge program, they do suggest, I'm sure a selectman meeting could suffice as far as public comment, but I think to follow the federal local bridge programs regulations, it would be a good idea to, when we decide if we're going to move forward with it, will the 20 percent we'd be able to pay for, if that's something that we could, we could find and move forward with, then I would suggest having, it wouldn't[1784.54] we could, we could find and move forward with, then I would suggest having, it wouldn't have to be the main topic of the conversation, but I would definitely make it a bullet point to open it up for public comment.
Good. I have a definitional question.
Sure.
We certainly don't want to alarm the public, and we wouldn't want the public to hear that a bridge is in poor condition and therefore they should be alarmed about driving over it. So can you help us understand what the word "poor" means?
Sure. So the, the federal government, they uses, they use a scale from zero to nine, which it goes from complete failure to excellent. So poor condition is a number four. So it's basically the middle of the road. So poor doesn't quite, poor is at the condition where they suggest because a build out of a bridge, depending on funding assistance, it could be up to a five to 10-year process. The county road, which we're involved with now, in the infancy stage of just getting the scope of work approved, it's going to be a couple of years for that to even get going. So now if we have this one following right behind you, it's going to take some time. So there's no, at this point in time, I don't think there's need to raise any red flags. Poor is simply stating that it's time to take some action, get some structural engineers to take a look at it and start moving forward with the process. But the, I believe that the categories below it are critical, subcritical, and then obviously failure, and I think we're years away from that. I think right now what's raising the red flag is there's some scour around the drainage inlets. It's corrugated metal pipe. So I think sort of, I, I, I think that as far as the vertical structure, it's, it's obviously stable. It's more of drain, it's a drainage-related replacement. And in fact, in the proposal that we're looking to get, we're looking as far as a cost savings, if rehabilitation is possible, if that's feasible, and if rehabilitation is not, then you'd have to do like county road and do full bridge replacement.
By way of comparison to what is, what was county road rated? Do you remember?
Actually, on this year's report, it is rated fair. So since I, this was prior to my involvement, and I wasn't sure why county road was selected, but it, it was fair, so I'm not sure what would be the steps to drop it from fair to poor, but since it is an interlocal bridge between Madison and Kellyworth, it is a good idea to have that one replaced, and the funding is there. So I'm glad that one seems to be moving smoothly, I think. But yeah, I think this one should be looked at also, especially since federal funding is available. As you know, the state funding on the, the local bridge program is, it's on freeze, just like a few other things.
And just so that the taxpayers understand, so this would be 20% from Madison, but the rest of, the 80% is federal, not, not state money, correct?
Not state money, it would be federal, 80% federal money, and then depending on what our estimates come out, we could bring that up at a future meeting, what our 20% would entail.
But the federal comes through the state, right?
It comes through the state.
They're going to be...
But to be clear, we don't have anything in CIP right now denoting bridge work in the future, correct? I don't recall it.
No, this sounds like it would be landing in our capital plan in three or four years out, right?
Right. By the time the construction started, it would probably be a couple of years to the actual...
Perfect for our planning process, which is great.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Number 15, discuss to take action on Verizon interest in leasing space in the parking lot off Sampson Rock Drive, the fiber equipment shelter. So moved.
Second.
So just to give you a little background, Verizon contacted me a few months ago. They said that they would like to put a box for like the size of a transformer on town property, originally, you know, stop and shop area. So we checked to make sure that was actually town property. It is. They made us an offer, which we negotiated up significantly from what they had originally offered, and we've come up with a, I think I've included it in the package, right?
I don't see it.
Is it in here? Okay. Laura, do you know where the, well, we don't have, we don't have the lease yet. This is just an offer. The offer is for $2,000.
Do I read it here?
Right.
I never printed it up.
I have it. It's part of the minutes, because I want to read it out.
Yeah, you want it?
So the initial monthly rent is $2,000 per month. The initial term is 10 years, and renewal terms are two 10-year with consideration of an early termination option exercisable by the town after 30-year right to renew. The rent escalation is 2% annually, and the rent commencement is a potter fee of the building permit. The shelter dimensions are roughly 17 by 38, so around 650 square feet lease area.
Okay.
And that's all above, yes?
Yeah.
And so is that?
I got some...
Is that actually...
But he's got his hand up.
Before you go, I did not notice this on the agenda first, so I think before you guys take any action on this in terms of an actual lease arrangement, there's got to be a referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so I think obviously perfect opportunity for discussion amongst yourselves tonight, especially as a lease arrangement might work out. But Planning and zoning is going to be interested in terms of, you know, what this land use perspective, what's it going to look like, things like that.
So I think what we wanted to do tonight was just approve moving forward with the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think that's within your authorities. Before you sign any lease, that you have to refer it to the Planning and Zoning.
What I wanted to do is get the approval from the board now so that we could negotiate a lease.
Yep.
What you gave is approval pending approval by the Planning and Zoning.
Okay.
With the lease that come back to us for final approval.
Okay.
Dave, Planning and zoning will consider a variety of land use issues, including the neighborhood effects of this thing.
Yep.
Yeah, the other, the other part I was thinking about, too, was just, I know at Stop and Shop, the tractor trailers tend to go in that direction to unload and, and leave. So is there going to be a, and not to mention it's going to be taking our parking spaces, but is it going to be in the way?
I mean, we'll take a look at it from all those different perspectives.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know whether to ask Tom or Dave, what does this thing look like?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm...
Being told a shipping container or...
Yes, I believe that, yeah.
Take it as a real... We're in a bread box.
So it would be, it would be visible from the road?
Oh, yeah.
Unless you get the new invisible thing.
Put it there.
Any other questions? Okay, so all in favor?
Well, did we rephrase the, I think we need to rephrase the motion.
Do you want to reiterate what I have?
Yeah, is it pending, pending, something?
Oh, pending is the name.
So I have to approve moving forward to create a draft lease agreement between the town of Madison and Verizon for the leasing of space in the parking lot off of Sampson Rock Drive for fiber equipment shelter pending approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think uncomfortable as long as the lease comes back to Board of Selectment for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 16, discuss to take action to approve designating Mateo Court as a public road.
I can speak to this one real briefly.
Just need a motion.
Okay.
John Wilson, second.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, sorry. So Mateo Court was originally approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in November of 2004 as part of the Grex subdivision located at 71 Old Toll Road. They set an original performance bond amount of $112,000. So at the time, the project was approved, the road was designed to town standards and was always intended to be adopted and approved as a public road. Back in 2006, Mike Dodd, Director, Assistant Director at that time, Public Works and Town Engineer, recommended reducing that performance bond based on the work that had been performed to date. And then most recently, back in February, Mike recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission that they take positive action on approving the road, requiring a 5% of the original bond amount for a performance bond, basically making sure that nothing fails within that first year that we, we take down the road as a public road. So Planning and Zoning Commission took action on that on February 16, 2017. Since that time, I've been back and forth with the developer's attorney and our attorney, exchanging documents, making sure we have everything in a package that can be recorded on the land use records. So if you guys choose to approve this tonight, I'll circle back with our attorney one last time, make sure everything is documented appropriately, and then it'll get recorded on the, on the town records and it'll then be a public road. Fact is, I believe it's being cloud today. I think there's a longstanding tradition of, for roads that have been designed to public standards for us to kind of maintain them in some fashion until they're formally adopted. So I don't know that you or the residents will see much of a change up there. Just be our responsibility to go on forward. That's helpful.
Question. This payment is fine. Is it for a year from once we accept the road?
Yeah.
I know it's Gus's day, the Board of Selectmen accepted a lot of roads, but it's kind of unusual for us, so.
It's unusual for me, too. This is the first one I've done here.
What kind of criteria should we have in mind as we're considering the motion?
I think you just have to look at our professional staff and making sure that the vote was constructed, has proposed, and then look to your, you know, attorneys to make sure that all the documentation is appropriate. One thing that our attorney recommended that we didn't have initially was a certificate of title, just to ensure that the current developer and owner has clear title to the roadway so that we do transfer appropriately. So we got that information from them. So I think that's really probably what you guys, that's helpful to look at.
Johnny, you don't realize that Dave pointed at you as while he was speaking.
I think that was stabbing in the back, wasn't it?
As our director of Public Works, do you have any observations about this road to share with us?
I actually looked at it today because I saw this on the agenda, and I haven't looked at the documents, but I see that it's been reviewed by the Engineering Department six months ago, I guess. And the road looks pretty good. There's a, there's a few minor cracks, you know, along the edges, but it's what I would expect after it's a, I guess, a 13-year-old road. It tells me that there's no...
Thank you.
...base issues.
Is there any concern of us in, in making this a public road, setting precedent at all with future deliberations on a private road becoming a public road?
This was stipulated to be made a public road when it was originally authorized. So, you know, unlike private roads, that everything...
All subdebating, or is it private roads that's in the town access?
Do we need to include the bond stipulation in the motion?
Yeah, I think you, according to, I guess, the charter, you guys have the authority to set the, the bond amount, so I would, I would include that as part of your...
And Dave, what happens to that over time, that, that...
Well, if we don't need it within that time period, it just gets given back to the, the property owner, developer at this point.
And under what circumstances would we need that?
If we had some kind of failure, you know, maybe a catch, one of the catch bases collapsed, then we could potentially call on that money to fix that. We could fix that if that, if that funded. That's really what it's for. If any issues hadn't, wouldn't have been revealed upon inspection and were unforeseen, we'd have a pot of money available to us to fix it.
So your recommendation, your memo is for the 5%, $5,600?
Correct.
John, do you feel that's sufficient?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Do we amend the motion to include the stipulation for the $5,600? If we do want to make...
Yeah, probably, probably should, yeah.
Move that we amend the motion to include the stipulation that the owner was holding an agent's bond of $5,600?
Go second. Go to second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Yes, I may. Thank Mr. Chairman. Just discussed a question a minute ago. From time in, over the past years, people would occasionally come to the town and say, how about taking over X road?
Right.
And the first thing you'd look at is, does it meet the town's standards in terms of construction, width, grade, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And almost always, it doesn't. So that's the end, end of the discussion.
We have a motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number 17, discuss to take action to approve extending the power purchase agreement between the town of Madison and Start Energy to include Danielhand High School and possibly the town campus and arts barn buildings. I'm going to remove this from the agenda because we, in, in looking at the project at, at the high school, we determined that the repairs that would be, needs to be made to the roof in order to accommodate the solar array are going to be too expensive and push the price of our power out of reach. So it's not, it's not economical to do this. Number 18, discuss to take action to approve commercial roofing to install the arts barn roof. Contractors off the state bid list. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Sure. I, I did a little memo, sorry, to Tom, actually, as I was before. And two-sided, one, the first side is mine, the second side is the contractor. We had a, an existing project. The history is, you know, was bid out. We awarded it last November 2015, 16, excuse me, 2016. I met with the contractor two or three months ago. He said he would hold the price. I met with him a few, you know, more than once out on the site. I wanted to be assured that he could do the project within the budget that he said. It came down to what he said, you know, the material prices, you know, exceeded his understanding and that he backed out. Knowing that it had a history and there's some people trying to move this along and wanting to get it done fast, which we all want, I'm sure, I looked at other alternatives. One of the alternatives is state contracts. You know, you're allowed to pull up state contracts. I did find one, and it is a company that we've done business with, and, you know, it's a very professional company, commercial roofing. They did the high school for one. I think they did the Brown School as well, well. So, you know, it's a very good company. It's been Connecticut for a while. They, we spent a long time looking at the roof with them. They went up on the roof with their team. They believe our budget's $98,000. They believe that they can meet the plans at time of material, which is all set out in the contract, which your rate is, with their 2014 rates, plus a markup on the material, which is in the contract. They believe they can do the work within the contract, within the amount of our budget. The concerns I have, and I put them in my memo, is, you know, there is no contingency. If we find something outside the scope of the roof that's in the plans, like something underneath the roof that we find, it's a problem. We have no funds for that. You know, the gutters are, you know, tired and need to be replaced. That's not on the plan. The trees all overhang the roof, you know, that's a concern of mine. I think we need to cut the roof, the trees back. And, you know, taking care of the building, any kind of roof demolition, there's always debris that falls in through the cracks of the decking. It just happens, you know? So you really need to have a crew inside, you know, covered in plastic. The TV people are up there, they have electronic equipment. I know that the arts barn has some, you know, show equipment as well. I'm concerned about that. So if we do go forward with the construction with this company, we're going to have to find other funds for these other items outside this project. I don't think that we would want to start the project and then have a problem and then have to stop. You can't tell a roof already is halfway done to, you know, go away and come back. You can, but it'll cost you money. You'll have to do some kind of temporary patch, and you'll go away and then come back whenever, you know, for us to get the extra money if we need it. The gutters, we could go without. The tree stuff, we could do at any time, so that's, those aren't my real issues.
Are those things you guys can do, too?
No.
The trees?
No.
Town employees?
No, not these trees. And my town employees are, you know, one custodian on the site, one day and one night.
I think you need a bucket to do those trees, right?
I would think so. You could climb them, but yeah, we would hire that out. Those trees are over the building and not something that any of us would do, any, any of our staff, I don't believe. The interior cleaning, you know, we could do that out of our operation budget, but it would cost us money. We couldn't do it that way. I'm just telling you what's possible. You know, I talked to Tom today at length, you know, I just put this together today, we spent some time trying to get it, and we pulled it together this afternoon, and I think the company's, you know, a good company, there's no doubt about it, I think they could do it. But the contingency, if there's any stuff that we find that we don't know about, has a concern of mine, because I hate that, you know, stop the project, people get going. So, that's basically, you know, what we have in front of us. I think we brought it here because we know that the board is interested in trying to move this project along, so Tom and I have the same feeling, we've talked to Scott Cochran at length to keep him up to date. I think Scott and I and Tom have the same concerns about the contingency, if something comes up, you know, we got an issue.
What, what, what do we need for contingency, do you think?
You know, I like 15%, but if we had 10, I think we've put a lot of time in looking at this thing. The only thing I can consider that might be potential is the, you know, the deck, which is a, you know, fibrous kind of board.
Is it teched?
It is teched. And, you know, at first, I'm looking at the roof and I'm like, I don't really see anything, you can see it from underneath, I don't really see any bad areas, but I didn't really investigate everything, but it's really the areas you can't see that are going to be the problem, you know, the areas. So, and it's four inches thick, the specum, you know, so construction is construction. I think without a contingency, you know, you're taking a big risk, because you don't want to pull the project, it's not like you can just go away for a month and then come back.
Basically, you need $10,000 for contingency.
Contingency in a middle.
Yes.
Actually, one of the others, though.
15.
15.
15 was more the, yeah.
Whatever you don't spend, you get back.
Yeah, you know, we're going to, we're going to do the roof, and if you, we do a contingency, and then I can replace the gutters, and I can cut the trees down, and I can, you know, do the interior. That's what the contingency is for, the things that you don't have to do, but you want to. And you know, it goes to the end, I mean, that's, you know.
Do we, do we want to approve this motion and then motion to open the agenda to, to do the special appropriation for, for not to exceed 15?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds like a really good idea.
All right. Can I just ask a quick question before we go there?
Yeah.
So, comparing to our previous vendor, the contractor that was going to do the work, what contingency did they have in place?
They had an 89, their bid was 89,000, and they had a $9,000.
10%.
It was an alternate for some nailing issues, and I went, we went up there and ripped the roof off in a section, because I wanted to understand what the nailing issues were. Are we going to spend, because if he said he needed the contingency, I was, they're not recommending we go forward, because it was all the money, there was nothing else. So, I'm not comfortable with going into a project with the max budget spent before I even start.
And my recollection is, is that we, through some happenstance, underfunded this project right from the start, right?
Well, the history was, we didn't realize that the techdom didn't have fire at first. Then we came in some PCVs, so those two issues, you know, brought it to a problem. But we're talking, I think, four or five years ago.
Yeah.
This is a longstanding project.
Don't think so.
You know, so.
We'll just make this move, but I just wanted to do this.
I just took it over recently, and I thought we were going to be able to work with the contractor that we awarded it to a year ago, unfortunately. You know, and I'm, you know, with all respect, I'm unhappy that he backed out, but I'd rather have him back out than get into the project and he's, he's losing money.
Sure.
The contractor that's losing money on our project is only going to hurt us.
He's going to cut ours, right?
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't want him to kill us, but we don't want him to lose money, because he's, we're, then it's just a bad. I've been in those kind of projects before, and they're, you know, end up having to throw somebody off, and then it costs you more money, because you're going to bring in the next guy, it's half done, it's, it's a bad idea. So, I was happy that he spent the time and looked into it, I'm sorry it didn't work out, but, you know, we moved on.
Listen, this seems very thoughtful, in my opinion, I mean, it sounds like, you know, adding a contingency is a really smart move, just so that we're not burned, and so I would support that.
All right, so we can move on this.
Yeah.
So, as far as the motion to approve commercial roofing to install the arts barn roof, all in favor?
Aye.
I move we open the agenda to discuss and take action on a special appropriation for contingency fund for the arts barn, subject to the approval of the Board of Finance. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's just open the.
Right, I know. So now, I'll make the motion.
Make the same motion. And I want to say it again, more, do I?
Yeah, correct.
And I'll second it again.
So, we put the amount of 15,000.
So, I think 15, I think.
I think that's plenty.
But, so the one thing I'd like to clarify is that these guys are ready to start working day after tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, so, if we're going to get the approval of the Board of Finance for this special appropriation, do we have time to wait for their next meeting, or should we do that as a special request?
Well, you know, that's a little optimistic, I think, you know, they're ready, they're saying they're ready to go. If I tell them tomorrow, they said they'll be out there the next day.
Quick, they can move that.
I think the material is a week lead time, we need to get a permit, you know, so we need to talk to the permit department. So, when is the next Board of Finance meeting? If it's in a month, that's a problem.
They just had it.
It's a month?
Yeah, they just had it last week.
Oh, yeah, so I would think we would have to ask them for.
For special.
Yeah, because if they start in a week, they're going to have the roof ripped off in two days.
That's what we're doing. I don't want to have that be a holdup, so.
No, 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 I thought it was.
The understanding that we have is that I'm going to ask the Board of Finance for a special meeting.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, I think that's definitely what we want to, if we want to go forward.
Yeah.
And I think these contractors are going to do a good job for us. The thing that I'd like to emphasize, too, is that this contract is a 2014 contract. So, that means there's 2014 rates. So, they're, they're saying that their rates are much higher now. This is a, you know, big company, and they, you know, bid these state work jobs, and they, you know, they're help to them, because they want to do the work. So, that's another positive. So, I, since you're going to go forward, I figure I'll put that out there.
So, the other thing also about this is, last winter, we spent a pretty good amount of money plugging holes and trying, you know, keep the water out of the building. So, if we can get this done before the winter, it'll keep it being.
I think it's smart.
It's going to be saving money along the way.
And frankly, saving some of their equipment, too.
And there's another positive, too, and that is, I worked with Bill on, I don't know how many groups, probably eight or 10 over the years, and he's always come in on time and under pressure.
No pressure, Bill, no pressure.
Okay. All that being said, any further?
We need to move.
Yes.
Any further, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number 19, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Eric Thornburg from the Board of, from the Board of Police Commissioners effective November 1st, 2017.
Oh, it's with reluctance that I'll make this motion. Eric Thornburg has been an extraordinary chairman of error of Madison Police Department Board of Police Commissioners. I think of him as more than a change agent. I think between he and Chief Drum, they transformed this department from what it was to a department of excellence today, and much of the credit goes to Eric and his leadership of that Board of Police Commissioners.
Absolutely, great, absolutely.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 20, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Ted Ob from the Veterans' Joint Advisory Committee effective November 1st, 2017. Unfortunately, Ted died a few weeks back, very suddenly, unexpectedly, so this is a technical resignation.
I'll second that.
I didn't.
Our motion. Our motion.
Our motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 20, I'll discuss and take action to approve the resignation of John Strong Edwards from the Shellfish Commission effective November 1st, 2017.
So moved. Second.
With our thanks.
Let me say that, dude. Aye.
Number 22, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Robert Sika from the Shellfish Commission effective November 1st, 2017.
So moved. Second.
And with our thanks, but what's going on with Shellfish?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Why are you jumping ship?
No claim, no, no pun intended.
He's a big claims.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to reauthorize the Old Elm Street Historic District Study Committee through August 31st, 2019.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have some appointments to make. And they could do these separately, because the Elm Street, Old Elm Street Historic District Committee is in session over there, I'm going to ask them to come in when we put them up, okay?
Yeah.
Number 24, appoint Joe Miller to the Veterans' Joint Advisory Committee for a term to expire on January 1st, 2018.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can somebody run over and just ask them to? Thank you, I know.
I'm the liaison to that group.
What are you doing in here?
At times, maybe I'd rather be over there.
Can you clarify, what is this, where is the Old Elm Street?
It's on Lurie Street, isn't it, Lurie?
It's west, west.
Is it the west one?
It's the west part, yeah. Usually called West Boston Post Road, yeah.
Okay.
So, it's heading toward Gilbert. I think it starts where, it's supposed to be, or the original one starts.
Yeah. No, nah.
Hope they all get their tax.
So we can tell who they are.
I think we can knock off taxes, thank you.
They're impressed at how quickly you moved the agenda.
Did you have to wait a long? Did you have to wait a long?
Those are coming.
I hadn't told them before. Hi, guys.
You moved through that agenda much more quickly.
Much faster than we are.
We're pretty impressed with ourselves, I guess.
Okay, so I'll read the, the item. Discuss and take action to formally appoint the following members to the Old Elm Street Historic District Study Committee with terms to expire August 31st, 2019. Eileen Banish, Eric Byrne, Thomas Boyle, Susan Cartlich, John Lind, and alternates Eric Gaxberg, Peter Clement, and Carol Snow. Many of them are here tonight, so moved.
So moved. Second.
And thank you for your service thus far and going forward. All in favor?
Aye.
I move Steve. Look, because my wife is on.
Yes, I got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I always am.
Come on, really?
25, tax abatements refunds.
I move we approve $3,331.06 in tax abatements and refunds.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 26, citizens comments. Gus?
Just one thing to address, Bob and, every morning, Monday through Saturday, the rain requires that I go to the library at nine o'clock, and I can't come home until 12:00. I don't know whether you, I'll save a seat for you. The only thing is, there's only one caveat, that I am the first person here to get the Wall Street Journal.
But, the library's going to be closing, so.
And once in a while, once in a while, you have to put up with this, so.
Thanks for the warning.
The other citizens comments.
I have an amendment to my previous comment, I'd really like to propose a question. Does the Town of Madison have a defined policy on the alteration of approved CIP projects? In other words, if there's a project that's been approved to start in the current fiscal year, what is the mechanism by which an elected official can adjust that scope of the project and/or the budget? In my mind, if Department A, I just happen to be looking at Beach and Rec because it's in front of me, if they've worked out a scope over two years and the citizens have approved the budget, who has the authority to then tell the director of Beach and Rec that he should change the scope and/or the budget?
So, this is citizens comments, this is not citizens question.
I posed my comment as a question, you don't have to answer it.
You can go to the CIP and they can fill you in on that.
I'm seeking that clarity.
Any other comments? Liaison reports.
I got a few.
Okay.
So, our ambulance folks, but I think Sam's still here, just received a large donation of $10,000 from the Madison Beach Hotel. It was actually 5,000 for the Madison Beach Hotel and 5,000 from the Duquette's family, so many, many thanks.
5,000 from donations that were given at the concerts.
Correct. Yeah, from the actual concerts, from the Madison Beach Hotel.
So, if those concerts stopped, then this, this flow of money.
Kept coming in, yeah, so going forward, but this was an amazing.
The kids are nice with their parents.
Right, so, an amazing donation, regardless. In terms of the library building committee, so we're working with a new architect, as many of you may or may not know, in attempt to get the project under budget. We're looking to reduce construction cost by about 10 to 20 percent. We'll do this with some value engineering identified previously, and probably some reduction in square footage. Some of the cost is due to the fact that, as suggestions of colliers, we added an additional owner's contingency below the line, which was not incorporated previously. Hopefully, we'll have a new concept plan in about a month's time. I think they're looking to sign the contract tomorrow with the new architect, which is great news. And I think that's, that on that one. The library Board of Directors, that I also sit on, so we're in the process of getting our contract signed with the new architect, as I previously mentioned, they'll be attending our next library board meeting. Fundraising efforts continue, that will raise the last million dollars, they think they're right under a million at this point, which is great news, that we committed to raise of the $15 million project. We will continue to search for location to move the library to when the library needs to be vacated under construction. And then Madison Youth and Family, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, there's a night with Adam Greenberg, Connecticut native Adam Greenberg, who's best known for being hit in the head during a major league debut on the first pitch of his first plate appearance. So, come listen to Adam speak, and this is on 10/25, and more information can be, I believe, out on the town website through Madison Youth and Family Services. The arts barn roof, we talked about, and then just, I guess, a last comment with Madison Youth and Family Services. Tom and I had the privilege of meeting with Scott Cochran and the president of the Youth Services Board a few weeks back, just started to talk about some of their requirements going into CIP and thinking about sort of their, their growth strategy, and I guess I was somewhat surprised that they're working currently in three different buildings, and that they're approximately about 3,000 square feet under, under their need for actual employee requirements and the wonderful programs that they provide to our town. So, I certainly would love to see that as a high priority in our CIP process as we go forward, so I'm putting it out there, but I think it's something that we, as a town, really need to start looking at to ensure that every employee has a wonderful place to work. That's it. Thank you. Bob?
I don't have any reports, but I have some remarks.
Do I go last?
Sure.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have any liaison reports, so speak of you, but I have gone to the last two board bed meetings, and it looks like they are moving forward with their plans from several years ago, several months ago, however you want to think about it. All roads led to the eventual closing of Island Avenue, they've now taken their formal vote. So, I am putting it to this group, minus Mr. Hale, that when we reconstitute in November, one of our early running agenda items is a plan to accept that property in a couple of years when it comes to us, and be ready to execute on that plan virtually on the day that, that we receive it.
You're here.
First, I'd like to report on the Madison Board of Police Commissioners. A first item is the Midtown Crosswalk. A formal request has gone in to the State Department of Transportation requesting a study of a crosswalk in the middle of our downtown, and Chief Drum reported that he is encouraged by the reaction he got from the Department of Transportation. That doesn't mean it's a done deal, it just means the chief is optimistic. Secondly, the chief reported to the police commissioners that he is continuing his discussions with other police departments in the area regarding the sharing of services, and it looks to be promising, in his opinion, and he believes that soon he will ask for police commission, to police commission conversation regarding the sharing of services. And if that goes well, then it would eventually come to this body, so that this Board of Selectmen can talk to our colleagues in another town, that Board of Selectmen, about the possible sharing of services. So, I see it as a three-phased set of discussions, and they seem to be moving forward. Thirdly, I wanted to report that with the resignation of Eric Thornburg, the chair, our vice chair, Ed Dowling, will become the temporary chair, pending the appointment of, by this body of a person to replace Eric Thornburg, and then the police commission, all five of them will vote on their new chair. So, for the time being, Ed will be serving as the chair. Finally, I wanted to report from the Pension Committee, that Bruce and I serve on, if you remember, you had charged this, a special committee to investigate investment manager
manager firms that, uh, work with our Pension Committee to invest the town's assets. And, uh, we are in the middle now of an RFP process, and we have 11 responses that we will be sorting through and then bringing to this body, probably in December, for, with our final recommendation.
Thanks, Tom. Tom, I, I, one more amendment and a comment, if you wouldn't mind, that I realized I forgot. So, um, the Night with Adam Greenberg on 10/25 is cosponsored by Madison Youth and Family Services, Maide, and the Happiness Club, so I wanted to make sure I got that out there. And then the Country School is hosting, um, a movie called Screenagers: Growing Up in the Digital Age, on November 9th, at 7:00 PM, and that movie deals with the topic of teens, internet, and social media. And people can find out more and register by visiting the Country School website, and I just wanna put it out there. I mean, with some of the challenges that have gone on over the last month with social media, um, I highly, highly encourage the public to look at this very closely. I think we need to start looking at social media, um, very closely.
Should I check my Facebook, Laura?
Yes, you should.
Yeah. I only have a couple of things. I did go to the Board of Finance meeting last week, um, where three of the members, um, have retired, they're done, so, we wish them well, and we thank them for their service. And, um, the only other thing was, last week, they had tip a firefighter over at Donahue's. I think that was pretty successful.
Yeah, I have the final number.
I'm sorry?
I don't have the final number, but it was pretty good rap.
I heard there was something about that final number, yes. Okay, Robert?
Okay, just a couple of closing remarks. I'm gonna miss this board. You have some very exciting things coming down the mic. First of all, a solution for academy school. I can almost see it, that, uh, the town will be acting on something, I would think, in the next 10 months, uh, or a solution for academy. You're another challenge coming, and that's what are you gonna do with Island Avenue School? And, and when are you gonna have to do it? That's gotta be a big one. The other thing I think is very encouraging is the potential for a town-slash-school business manager-type position, who could handle, uh, all those kinds of functions, and be another example of shared staffing. Uh, I think Madison is outstanding in the state of Connecticut for shared staffing, and I think this would be another step in that direction. I would hope that you're gonna have some excitement with charter revision, because it is surely needed. And part of that is to, we need to better define the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance. And I know you're starting on that, and I hope you continue with that, and have a, some kind of an inter-board agreement before we get a charter revision, but I think we need to set some examples there. Uh, I think we also have to realize that there are major boards and committees in town, and minor boards in committees in towns. And I personally feel that requiring liaison from this board to all those people is not necessary, and is a waste of your time and energy. I think at the least, members of the Board of Selectmen should receive the agendas and the minutes, and that may be enough. Certainly, on the major boards, to attend their meetings would be probably a good idea. And then the other is, I'm looking forward to hopefully affordable budgets. As you know, uh, this year's budget, the Board of Finance gave us more money than we wanted, and that's too bad, because we could've done as good a job with less dollars. So what's gonna happen? We're gonna have some money left over, it's gonna go back into the general fund, and, but the taxpayers have paid that money, and, and we really didn't need all that money this year. I, I did enjoy my time on the board. Hopefully, I will be back to you on some other appointed Board of Commission. Uh, I don't wanna go away yet, so, and, uh, Paulie wants me out of the house, and we'll see what happens. And I wanna thank you all very much for a wonderful time on this board.
Um, yeah, we did, we were gonna do one more thing, quickly. Actually, I think we can have Dave address it.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Dave, you want to just address the RFP?
Sure. Let me hand out. So the, uh, request for proposals for academy school was scheduled, and I believe did, uh, go out today. Um, it doesn't mean if this board collectively has some additional thoughts, it could be incorporated, I believe it can.
When is it actually going in?
Today.
It is.
Yeah. So, uh, both, for everybody's information in the audience, both Tom and Al sit on the subcommittee, um, that's kinda steering this process. Um, and so the, um, initial round of RFQs went out about a month ago, and we had 11 responses, and those responses, um, there were a few, um, local respondents, but there's respondents from New York, from Boston, from Rhode Island, that have done work, um, literally all over the world. So there's world-class developers that are interested in academy, which is good news for us, um, because I think we're gonna get a lot of interesting proposals that we can share with the public. So this RFP, um, basically opens the door for developers to propose projects that would either utilize a portion or all of the 5.13 acre academy property, and it would open the door for lease arrangements or outright purchase of the property, um, and it just gives some general guidelines based upon that public information session we held in the past, the thousand, so responses we got to the survey, with all those comments included, um, the different, um, public meetings we held. And so some of the, um, parameters that we asked them to adhere to, um, were that a playground, as well as some level of open space, should remain post-development on or very near the site.
That's some information.
A mixed-use building would be preferred, um, a chain store, 100% apartments or condominium should not be considered, um, maintain the shell of the original 1921 building, and, um, provide a more attractive pedestrian connection between the academy school property and the core of Madison Center to the east. And so the town will be interested in all development options. And so it outlines, you know, keeps things relatively open, um, again, issued today, responses are due, uh, December 18th, and there's a lot of financial information that's gonna be requested from the respondents, and I think that's really gonna, um, cut some of the, uh, proposals outright away. If they don't meet the financial qualifications, they're not going to advance on to be shared to the public, um, because we don't wanna have happen here, what just recently happened in Clinton, where there was a development that got approved, the public got behind it, and it went belly up. We don't want that same thing to happen. So we don't wanna, um, get the public excited about an idea that isn't financially feasible. And so, those are the general terms. It's kinda looking forward, uh, once we receive, uh, these proposals, we're working with colliers to help us identify, you know, who might make the cut from a financial perspective, and those will all be shared with the Board of Selectmen. Um, you guys will have an opportunity to review all the proposals, and the subcommittee's gonna be making a recommendation, uh, with proposals to share with the general public. We'll have a robust series of public workshops and survey mechanisms to get input on those. Um, you know, and ultimately, this body, the Board of Selectmen, is gonna be making a recommendation, um, for one proposal to potentially advance to a referendum. So that's kinda looking way out. Um, but, the, I guess the key points I just wanna emphasize is, we've really tried to keep this process very open, um, in terms of different possible arrangements, how much people, percentage of the property people might be interested in developing, um, so we get the, uh, best proposals we can get. Kind of a general overview.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you.